And just so everyone's aware, the microphones are all live.
I urge you. Kate does tend to show up just a bit late during the summertime. I haven't heard that she was. Was she out recently? Oh, it's because they had a memorial service for y'all. That's right. Forgot about that. Maybe you're reading there. Julie McDonald, Hannah Bezenette, Jim C., Dave Creighton has yet to arrive, Michael Campnitch, Chanel McKinley has yet to arrive, Mayor Timothy O'Conner, four council members and Mayor President, Constituent's Quorum, Mr. Mayor.
Second?
motion executive to approve the consent agenda, all in favor?
I have a question.
All right.
On the, on page two of ordinance seven, Jody, on the proposition number one, the, at the bottom, is there potential or is it appropriate to add anything in there about the match that we're getting from our court?
I will ask the bond counsel, the woman who is an attorney who specializes in foundations, she might, she wrote out this language herself, and I'm guessing that she didn't put other text in either because of some legal requirement, maybe it's just protocol, but I can find out.
Because I just think a lot of people will say, oh, with COVID and everything else, now's not the right time, but they understood the opportunity for the chorus that might, I just feel like the voting don't want to have all the information.
Sure. So, in, on a related note, the second reading, you'll see some editorial changes to the text of the ordinance, like I've got some additional comments from the bond counsel. It's largely the same. Some of it's formatting, some of it is some additional clarification on, on the general obligation aspect of the bonds. So between now and then, I will ask her about whether or not to put in the course match.
That can certainly go in any advertising we do, or I would think we would actually be able to change the proposition. Or not, is that up to the bond people?
I think that's what Julie was asking.
Yeah, that's what I was suggesting. It's because they think having it right there when you're voting.
Sorry, everybody. Anyway, I will put the question here.
Okay.
Find out.
That's all I have.
And I am working on a newsletter for the, for the electorate that I'll bring to the council, a second reading of this ordinance, and have you look at as well, give me your feedback on on the voter education aspect of this.
Consent agenda approval? One question. All in favor of accepting a consent agenda?
Aye.
Opposed? Any hearing from the public?
Nobody has signed up to call in tonight.
Excuse me. Letter here from Gail's. Planters here. From Sean C. Everybody's read that? I think it's stuff we already kind of acted on, anyone?
So I think this is round two, what she's talking about.
Well, I think we need to change some of the way it works.
Correct.
The changes that she's talking about, correct, are kind of for round two, for the round two discussion tonight. So, I've been inactive, former or the other, the council will be talking about it later on, the changes.
Any comments on that? Any reports? The administrator?
Mr. Mayor, I've got a staff report in the packet, and there's plenty on the agenda. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
I have submitted a report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you guys have.
I submitted a report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
City clerk?
She's excused tonight, Mr. Mayor, and I will just comment that the next meeting is scheduled for August 6th, first Thursday in, in August.
City planner?
Submitted written report and a number of other memos, be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Brian? Fire and EMS, while we had a fire last week, somebody barbecued that out of control.
Did you say he did? It is just hours.
This guy started it when I went to sleep.
Why did you not, though?
He said the lumber, I said barbecue on top of the fire. There, just the lumber. Our fashion.
Let me get him on here. About that, it's not unneeded.
Is that vacation in?
I feel like this is the first.
Go ahead, Hoss.
There is a bit of a delay, so should hear from you shortly.
Hoss, can you hear me?
Is the speaker turned on? He doesn't have the mic, the phone on the speaker. Did you want to call the cell phone? Can you hear the number? Yes, please.
Yes, it's number. I don't know which one you want to call.
Oh, can you hear me?
Hi, Hans, yeah, you're on the speakerphone in the council chambers, we can hear you loud and clear, please give your report.
Okay, I have submitted a written report, and would like to add to that report that I have spoken with the lighting manufacturer today, we do have their warranty and failure analysis personnel working on it, and they are cooperating with us and trying to come up with a solution. We sent one fixture back, and when they analyzed it, they found that it had a pinched wire in it, and that's why that burned up. Today, we started disconnecting lights to see if we could find the culprit of what's causing the light to pop the breaker, and we have almost all of them disconnected now, and it's still just popping the breakers, so I'm going to be talking with them tomorrow, and I hope to have a solution for this very soon. Their technicians are still not able to travel, their company has a travel ban, and that's preventing them from sending a technician here with some better diagnostic equipment to test things. I did ask them if they would be willing to maybe took contract someone else to do that troubleshooting for them, and they they are receptive to that idea, they just wanted me to do a couple other things before we go that far. I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
I'm concerned about our liability if those lights aren't working, Hans. You might stress that to those people when you talk to them.
I have brought that point up, Jim, that's something that I've really worked off of, that, you know, these lights are in a busy active rainwater harbor, that fishermen are coming and going at all hours of the night, and that is a huge liability, so they are aware of that, and they are trying to work to come up with a solution. It was good, it was cool to get this off the ground, but it seems like they have their full attention now, and that they're trying hard to help us out.
Hey, can you keep us updated on that?
We will, I will.
All right, thanks. Any more questions, Hans?
I just think that getting a subcontract on this as soon as possible is the appropriate solution. I mean, we can try one or two more things, maybe harrow, but we need to have somebody on it now, that's unacceptable.
Yeah, I don't know if we have recourse yet. I don't know if we got a recourse where we can move lots and put them in and kill these guys or what, but I think we probably do, because there's a fail.
I tell you, one of the things that I've done that I wish I'd have spoken sooner, but I've found in every application so far that the new LED fixtures, they just, if they make it through the first three, four months, they're going to last a while, but I've found that many don't, and when you need to fix it, the only option is to replace the fixture, for the most part. And so, what I've done for every fixture now is you find something with a common base, and I guarantee you they make an LED bulb for it. And I wish we'd have gone that route, wish I'd recommended it, fixtures are typically cheaper, and then when the time comes to replace the light bulb, that's all it is, is replacing an LED light bulb. And what I've seen time and time again is you've got these fixtures, and they're, you know, sure, some of them are great, some of them are not, but if they do last two, three, four years, by the time you get around to actually start replacing them, by then, that fixture is now obsolete, you'll never be able to find the exact same one again, and so the remount, you know, stuff that takes place, all sorts of customization to make it fit and work and wired differently, and it's just, it's horrible, the LED stuff is not all it's cracked up to be, but the bulbs, you still get the efficiency. I mean, I don't know if we have the option to tell this company that we're dissatisfied with your product, that we'd like to send it back and find a fixture that accepts a common bulb and buy LED bulbs and guarantee it for the future. And that's what I've done in every facility here with my house, and all of our boats, do not buy LED running lights for your boats. We've got ones on our boats, North River put them on there, $280 a set, guess how long they lasted? One season when they're full of water, they rust it out and they're all shot, every one of them. And the manufacturer, I mean, sure, they'll warranty it, okay, so they sent me another set. You've got, you know, three man hours folding headliners out, putting new ones in, and guess what? How long do those last? One year. Well, now your warranty's up, you're not essential to one set you're going to send. So guess what I put on all the boats? Regular ones with an LED bulb, so. I think it'd be wise to head that direction, if at all possible, and, you know, an electrical engineer is going to say, wow, that's really simple. The only thing that I've found to be a complication is everybody has to, they can wire differently for LED fixtures because the load is so different, and so, you know, they don't have to use as large a wire, you can put more on one breaker load. So, the only thing is, you know, really, you should probably put some sort of sticker in there that says LED bulb only, so that someone doesn't go throw a high pressure sodium underneath 26 base, and then you've gone over the limits of your circuit. But other than that, I've experienced no problems with it.
Well, let's let Hans know that one, too.
Yes.
I'm back on your job.
Oh, there you are.
Did you guys have a question for me?
Yeah, we're looking at telling those guys to take their lights and give us some different ones, that have discrew-in bulbs that are LED.
Yeah, the problem with that is our lighting, we did have in South Cove, it worked great. However, in South Cove, we have designated light bulbs that aren't very high off of the dock, they're at a set height off of the dock. The height never changes. In North Cove, we went with what was originally done, and that was the lights were mounted to the top of the pilings. And so, the problem that we run into is we're asking a lot from these lights, these lights are mounted very, very high, and we have relatively low voltage powering them, and they have a big job to do, there's well over 20 feet at high tide to, or a medium tide, I guess, to light the dock. And so, these bulbs, you know, originally, our engineer had recommended a higher quality fixture that was more expensive. And we found this one, and it was cheaper, and we went with it, so.
Okay, how much you spend on LED fixtures, they're all going to burn up the same? It's my experience, I bought the expensive ones and I bought the cheap ones, and they all burned up, every one of them.
You know, we're going to have to look at doing something different, Hans, if these guys can't come up here and fix these things. So.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on to library.
Thank you, Hans, good night.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Angela.
Okay, I submitted a written report, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I did want to add, I just received word yesterday that we were approved for this year's grant from IMLS that we get in cooperation with the CTA, so it's $10,000, and I'm going to use part of it to replace some furniture in the kids' area, so we'll have some more room and things will be more efficient. And then the other big thing I'm excited for is a virtual reality set that I'm going to use in some educational and fun teen programming, whenever we can start letting small groups back in the building, so that's exciting.
Any questions to library?
Yeah, that's good news, thank you, Angela.
Thank you.
Thanks. Police chief. Public works.
Yeah, I've submitted a written report as required, be more than happy to answer any questions you may have concerning that report, thank you.
Okay. Any questions for public works? Are bathrooms running over there at the ballpark?
Yes, sir, as far as I know, they are.
Okay. That's good news.
Yes, sir.
Parks and Rec.
Can you hear me? Hi, I submitted a really pretty report with lots of nice pictures, if you have any questions, I'm right here.
Any questions?
No, just thanks for, you know, the work she does all the time, especially in the summer hours and before, and all the activities she does. Super.
Thank you.
Done a really good job on that Fourth of July thing, so.
Well, thank you.
They worked pretty hard on it, they did an excellent job, so.
They did.
Yeah. Sean was great out there, he was there all day.
It's amazing what a few drinks will do to me.
Angela. Thanks, Victoria.
Thank you.
Parks and public facilities.
I've submitted a written report, would be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Are those bathrooms open all day, over there at the ballpark?
They are, they are currently open all the time.
Good. That'll work. Do you get my metal door working in the fire department?
I've got the new opener that we discussed, it's at the shop, we just, with the Fourth of July and everything, we just, it hasn't gotten to, but I do have the new opener there, ready to go in.
Okay. We're having to act a time with that door, so.
Yep, I think this should fix the problem.
Okay. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Mr. Police chief.
I submitted a report, I'm going to add that Becky Bateman has had her last station no longer with us, but I have filled her position. Abby Foster, she used to be with OCS. Last year, she was a fish counter here on the island, has a degree, certified in sign language. She's, I think, on her third day of training, so it was actually kind of nice to be able to slip somebody in and get them trained up real quick, because with Becky, she was a DMV agent, so now I have to fix somebody else within the agency and get them certified for DMV, because right now Tracy is the only one that's doing it, so she's got a tremendous load that she is picking up. We've been doing the Class D road tests starting Monday, we will start CDL road testing again, we already have one person scheduled. Unfortunately, there's going to be a three to four week down period in between, starting Monday, we have a couple CDL road tests already scheduled, but then Officer Page, who is the CDL examiner, has a family emergency, is going to be waiting for anywhere from two to four weeks, so if he's off island, then I can't offer the service. So, we're making that known to the people that want the tests. We actually, we have people from Ketchikan flying over here to do road tests, because we're the first DMV subcontractor, even state DMV in Southeast Alaska that's doing the road testing, so people are calling from six, you know, wanting to come down here to do a road test. There was a bunch of other things, but something else just came up, I'm going to have to run here, but that's pretty much it, if there's any questions.
Thank you.
You say?
Oh, yeah. Reading and correspondence?
The letters from CTA regarding the sales tax issue, I guess I'm just interested in finding further, you know, what are the legal issues with that, where do we stand on that? You know, how do we, how do we come to some kind of a mutually, you know, something that we can all agree to and work through?
Am I under the impression the fishing chicks owners are tribe members?
I believe so.
That's a big reason why we need to continue to fight for them to be able to just purchase land and put it into trust, because what people do, they can end up buying all the businesses in Craig, put them all into trust, and then we have no more sales tax. Fortunately, the president we have right now has stopped them from doing this for the moment, but the implications for the future are really bad, really bad, because they have more money than anybody else. They could end up buying Thompson House, putting it into trust, and where does our tax money go? This is a huge problem, we need to figure out whether what they're doing here is legal or not, because there are all sorts of vendors who will end up parking in a block to get around sales tax. And it's something all they're doing is collecting, it's not like it's anything out of their pocket in the first place. So, I think we have a problem with this. That's kind of what I didn't get about it. The business doesn't occur the past, in fact, if anything, all they're doing is supporting their community. I guess they don't believe that secret credit requires tax revenue, but in the city, credit is limited in businesses, they don't pay any sales tax. Money on the other deal. I have a problem with that. We'll discuss big one of my proposals.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
So, you can tell by my response to the letter from the tribe, my presumption is that the transactions are taxable because they're between two private parties. I don't think it's necessarily true that because a transaction takes place on trust land, they're not taxable. And so, that's the approach, as I continue my discussions with the tribe, that's that's the presumption I'm making, I think it's reasonable, and I guess if the council has a different view, this would be a good time to, or the same view, either way, it'd be a good time to provide some feedback.
I have the same view, and I thought your response was.
Was this a camera letter, actually, you received one, would you take that and send?
I missed the first.
Was this a response to the letter that you sent?
No, I did meet with a representative from the tribe the other day, and I believe that they're going to produce some documentation that may feel supports their position.
That's what I'd be interested to see, is the federal law you're referencing?
Me too.
Okay.
More discussion on that?
So we're just waiting for basically a response and to request for legal standing?
Yes. Right. I believe it will be forthcoming pretty soon.
Okay, thanks for me. I haven't had a question in reading the correspondence for the mammogram since they canceled here for those that maybe want to do something like that. Now, this procedure can be done at Ketchikan? So is that something that possibly, you know, the COVID funding, if people want to do this, we could, there's a way we could help at least residents support that if this, if there's a need?
I'm one of the people that was scheduled for that timeframe, and so I just want them to wait unless for the next time it came. I mean, because they will come again. It just, I mean, unless you're, unless you're at some, if it's just a general screening, you know, you wait for the next one, or you have the option of going over to Ketchikan if there's some kind of more urgent issue. But generally, the people that are waiting on the, on the mammogram van or whatever it's called, usually it's just general screening. If there's a, if there's a more pressing concern, you could have said that.
There's nothing or that unfinished business? COVID-19?
Mr. Mayor, so I'll just update the numbers at the top of the memo. So as of yesterday morning, there have been a total of 697 tests on Prince Wales. We have not had any additional positive tests, so we still are at the three positive tests from Prince Wales providers, and then three positive tests that were found through the Ketchikan Airport screening. 623 of the tests to date have come back negative, and there are 71 tests currently pending results. There's a little bit of slowdown on some of the laboratories just because of just the amount of testing that they're doing at the lab in Seattle that, that a lot of the providers are sending tests out to or just getting backup with, with a lot of testing from other locations. I will also note, SIRG announced yesterday that starting on Saturday, they will be providing free testing to asymptomatic folks who want to know if they currently have COVID. This is a, this is a test for folks who currently have some, enough virus load to be picked up by the test. This is not an antibody test. This will not tell you whether or not you have had COVID. It will only tell you if you currently have an active viral vote. But SIRG is doing that region wide, and Alicia Roberts is participating, so they'll be providing that service to all island residents starting on Saturday. And I think their plan is to, to open a testing site each Saturday for some unspecified amount of time.
Is it restricted to residents or is it anyone?
It just says community members. The announcement by SIRG says community members. I, I don't know. I haven't asked specifically how restricted they're being. Any other questions on the short memo? All right.
Consider approval of Craig Economic Assistance Grant Program second round.
So, council will recall that there was some discussion in the council's last meeting approved about $145,000 worth of economic assistance grants to small businesses and nonprofits that were, that were in the process of finishing paperwork up with individuals. We've gotten about probably a little less than half of the, the checks are either out the door already or are in the, in the system in finance being approved so they can get sent out of the system. The council knows there were four, four applicants that were being ineligible, three of them because of some of the rules surrounding the sole proprietorship, and then Sean Seat was the fourth that was ineligible. The last meeting, council asked me to, uh, look at modifications in every round of funding that would pick up those ineligible folks. Since then, Sean Seat has withdrawn their application. So I didn't put anything into the second round specifically to deal with Sean Seat's circumstances, which were a little different than the other three. The other three, the solution that I proposed is, is that the sole proprietors are eligible if their gross sales and receipts, that would be their sales and receipts before they take all the deductions that that made, that was very likely made them ineligible in the first round. As, as long as their gross sales and receipts meet a certain threshold. You saw V L S lens's comment earlier in a letter from Sean Seat that was in plenty of places. When you got here tonight, they feel the $56,000 is too high. There's certainly no magic number there. It's whatever the council was comfortable with that essentially qualifies as a business that the council wants to include in the program. The number can be zero if you want to open it up to essentially anybody with a business license or who has reported any business. You can make it $25,000. Like I said, the $56,000 is the median household income for the Prince Wales side of Census area. But there's nothing, nothing magic about that number. So other than that, the, the program is intended not to fund folks who are eligible in the first round a second time. I, I do have some thoughts on how to continue some economic assistance funds to businesses after this second round, but the primary point of this round would be to both resolve the eligibility issues for those sole proprietors and give a second opportunity for folks that, for whatever reason, didn't, didn't apply during the first round that was eligible. As the memo talks about the, the fact, the council approved $200,000 in the first round. Ultimately, we have about $145,000 of approved grants. I would be, I would ask the council if it's inclined to approve a program tonight to let me know if there's any changes to the draft documents that I provided to kind of settle on an overall amount of funding that you would like to see. And then to approve by motion the documents in the program to go out. Our plan is to advertise this program longer, probably 30 days, so that we have a better chance to get information in the newspaper as well as the other methods that we normally get the information out on. And then bring it back, bring those approved grants back to the council for approval.
Is the 145, is that the final number from the, from the first round?
Um, yes.
Like it won't go any higher than 145?
No.
Okay. Do you guys want to discuss or do you want to make a motion first?
I still, I have a question. How many, do you know how many business licenses, active business licenses are listed to speak right here now?
I don't, I can't. I can find that out for a second.
You know, I'm thinking that the larger businesses, kind of your mainstay businesses, that would probably qualify for either one and or two now. And I might be wrong on this, but it would seem like they would constitute, you know, quite a, quite a percentage of businesses. The smaller businesses that might fall underneath the threshold that we've used in the second round here. That's kind of the number of interest that is how many there might actually be in the community. And how many of them, even with the criteria you had, where you have to have, you know, previous history and stuff. There may not be that many of them that could meet this criteria, even if the, if the, you know, the starting minimum was, say zero or five or something. There may not be a whole bunch of them. That's why I was interested in that. If that would be the case, I'd be more, I personally would be inclined to make it pretty broad.
I was kind of thinking we split the difference. Do you have the median income, which puts it at 28,000?
I was thinking along the lines of, you know, much like in the letter, even a $20,000 income for a small business is a significant supplement to, for you, you know, primary income for some in this community that are maybe half retired or whatever, and you know, to not have that business that you rely on for years, even on the money volume, it's not huge. It's a significant impact, like you said a lot. So I'm inclined to, to, you know, my, my can make it grow. Just trying to get as many people to qualify as possible. And like he said, I think a lot of the larger businesses have qualified for some significant amounts of money and are probably doing okay right now despite, I mean, like struggling like the rest of us, but, you know, they're, they're gonna, gotta make it or they've received assistance. And so it's the smaller businesses that are, that we're trying to help here. I'm inclined to drop on a low.
Yeah.
And, and you know, we've, we've got, you know, appropriate 65,000 left.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, when we receive applications that qualify, I'm inclined to appropriate more if, if needed to satisfy requirements.
And I'll, I'll add on the financing end if it helps the discussion a little bit. The intent for the programs moving forward is that it be strictly CARES money. So we're no longer using some of the payroll reimbursement that we talked about from the general fund.
Pass the 200,000?
Actually, the, the plan was that all of the money moving forward in the second round, as well as the individual assistance program through the nonprofits that we'll talk about, was going to come out CARES, was going to come out of the CARES money.
So do you want to just eliminate the, that cap of a certain amount of income and, and load it to 55,000? The total amount? Because we've done 145, so it's 55,000.
Or total amount to be distributed?
Total amount to be distributed, 55,000, and then just eliminate this, what was it, 56,000 requirement?
Brian was saying he was not planning to blow past the 145 in the second round, so. Are you?
Well, we, we.
I don't, I don't know that that's true, because I don't know how many businesses will apply.
Right. And that's what I'm saying. We, we don't know. So are you saying your, your guys' plan is to go with CARES Act money because you feel like it's going to go past the initial appropriated 200,000 or?
We, we didn't have that option before because if they received money for payroll, then they would be ineligible for our program.
We, we've had both the ineligible folks and a number of businesses say that they didn't know the program was out there. And so they didn't apply. So there's really a big question mark as to how many people are going to apply and at what level of funding.
Where's the money? Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I, I think the way to think about it is, if the council wants to, is not necessarily just using leftover 55,000, but, but deciding how much you want to appropriate to another round of funding. There were 29 applications, 25 that were approved in the first round. Like I said, we've heard from a couple of businesses that said they hadn't heard about it and, and a handful of businesses that were not eligible. The first round, likely more businesses similar to them that will be eligible the second round.
I guess my concern was, part of the reason we use the general funding was to eliminate the potential for them being disqualified from other funding avenues.
Right.
And so if we move on to just using CARES Act funding, we're potentially driven into that situation for not a huge amount of money.
Right.
What we.
I guess that's a decision up to them.
Want to reimburse ourselves from the general fund backing of the CARES Act or no?
Not, not for the first round of funding.
Not really.
The state program, the state economic assistance program called AK CARES, when it first came out, had a requirement that you could not have accepted any other CARES money from the federal government or from municipalities. Since then, they have administratively changed that to you could not have, you cannot have accepted more than $5,000 in either federal or municipal CARES money. And so, but the state program has had a difficult time getting folks to apply. They've just given out a tiny fraction of the, the total amount that they've allocated because their funding businesses are already ineligible because of payroll protection and economic injury laws. But the, the intent of the first round was when the, when the state program said you could not have any other funds. I will say that out of the 25 applicants that were approved in the first round, there were, there was only a small handful that we paid over $5,000 to. So if they, if a business hasn't received any other CARES Act money from the federal government, then they would still be eligible for the AK CARES program, even if they accepted up to $5,000 of the municipal money. The way that it's written now, I will say that's a changing landscape because there's a lawsuit pending. There was the, the filer, the lawsuit asked for an injunction to stop the rule from going into effect about the $5,000 limit. The judge, the judge did not grant the injunction, and so the state is proceeding with the $5,000 rule, but the lawsuit is still in place and may come back.
And in any case, you have our proposal, but it's, it's council's decision about where the money comes from in the end.
This list, Brian, this is all the people that have a business license within the city of Craig?
Yes.
Is that what this is?
Yes.
But the people that we might be eligible, we're only being the ones that are based in Craig? Is that true?
Yes, the, the, the first round and the intent of the second round is requires a physical presence. Doesn't require that the person live here, but it requires either a physical location, like a storefront or warehouse space, or, or for some businesses, like taxi businesses that regularly operate and have a special permit through the city to do so. And then for fishing vessels who moor their boats in Craig city limits for more than half the year. That, that's kind of been the requirement, or was the requirement in the first round, and well, that's looking at the same requirement for the second round.
Sure, you said this, sales tax accounts or business license?
Sales tax.
Sales tax accounts.
It's a list of businesses.
Business customers.
Yeah, business customers. This one was printed out in January this year.
Okay.
How many are on that list?
There's 66 businesses on there, about 66. I may have missed one way or the other. 66 that have a Craig address.
Okay. About 66, alright.
And I have a question on the boats.
Yeah, I don't know if the boats are on here.
Right, the boats aren't down there because they don't have business licenses, first of all. And second of all, a lot of the boats thought they were going to work over here last year. thought they were gonna work over here last year, but the product was all over in Ketchikan, but I know several of them that paid mortgage here. The fact that they didn't come here, they didn't generate any revenue for Craig, they didn't buy fuel here, and yet are gonna be eligible for this, doesn't stick well with me. There are several goody done boats that, because they have the, the daily rate is so large, it's way cheaper for them to buy the six month rate when they're coming in and out over the course of three months. Or the, the season could have ended in four months, so they just buy the six month rate, and then they're in came here, because they didn't end up.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. The, the determination, is it based on the mortgage they paid or their actual physical presence?
Yeah, I, I, I didn't ask the, I didn't ask the harbor staff to break out how many days a vessel was physically against mortgage, but. So the determination for the first round was made on essentially paid mortgage.
Okay.
And that's.
I'm sorry.
And that's their physical presence?
For fishing, for fisheries related business.
Yeah, just having paid mortgage, not actually being here is the way they have it now.
Well, just to do the other side, they typically do come here and do buy fuel, but because of COVID, they weren't able to.
We're talking about the, see, this is a year long process, so the ones that would be eligible are going to fish. Ketchikan last spring, all spring while it was still good, but they thought they were gonna come over here and fish. These never tested good, so they never came here, but. Actually, they may have come a couple of times, that's why they bought their mortgage. But they didn't end up doing any business here.
But because of COVID, they're not doing COVID.
No, because of COVID. COVID didn't happen till this spring, it's for sure.
Has, has any other cities in southeast or parts of Wales done this type of giving back to businesses? That you know of?
There are a couple of communities I know are talking about it, but I don't know if anyone has, has gotten this far with the, with the business related program yet.
At least not on Prince of Wales.
Not on Prince of Wales. Yeah, a number of communities in southeast, down around the state, certainly.
But not on Prince of Wales.
I, I don't think, and I think there, like I said, there are a couple that have been talking about it, but I haven't seen advertised any of the programs that have been approved.
So, my inclination for the second round is to, get that qualifying number low. I feel like there are still a lot of programs that are, that continue to roll out as the state and the Fed, trying to figure out how to get this money out to various businesses and things. So really, I'm hesitant to do a round that is strictly out of the CARES Act money. I still feel like it, we, we can do a, a big service to our businesses by doing another round of the general fund. And, and then I do like the thought of changing that mortgage qualification. If nothing else, just to focus on the businesses that actually have a physical presence here, other than maybe parking a vessel here. Those are my thoughts. And when it comes down to, if we have, you know, a greater amount than is left over from our original allocation or appropriation, then we can decide whether we want to fund it fully at that time from the general fund or reduce the available amount. Is that a possibility? In other words, if we can't fund the full request, we can just reduce it proportionally?
And, and we want to bring the list back, the council will have a number of choices, starting with leaving it at the original appropriation, and everybody will get a proportionally reduced amount. Or the council can appropriate additional funds to make it whole, or make it whatever level the council wants to make it.
I, I don't believe the number of applicants are gonna be huge, but I believe that the applicants that we have are, they're gonna be in need.
So basically, we need to decide the cap and the, the income. And we're gonna start with fifty six thousand.
How many businesses were approved in the first round?
Twenty five.
Playing back, okay. And for the list, it said about sixty businesses, give or take, right? So if we did a second round, figuring that the other thirty applied, then that'd be another hundred and forty five. So if we're trying to fifty six cap it, that's like way low.
No, I mean, the fifty six is the, I'm trying to think what's left over of the payroll. No, fifty, fifty five is what's left from our original allocation. The fifty six is how much money they make off of the business. I don't know the technical term.
Oh, that is seventy five percent, that'd be.
Well, yes, exactly.
Yes.
So do we want to lower the fifty six, how much do we want to allocate? Those are our two questions.
I definitely think we need to lower for all the small businesses.
I agree with Molly too.
And the boat thing, I don't think that we should have an issue with them that they didn't fish here last year. We're trying to keep these businesses coming back here and spending their money, and they will. It wasn't their fault that the, the prime didn't test clean here. They had come here year after year and, you know, spend their money by their fuel.
It wasn't just goody done, the cucumber operators were all on the Ketchikan side.
Yeah, and that happens. We share, we share. It goes back and forth and to keep, if, if the money is to keep these businesses flowing, I mean, I don't see why we would.
There's also, they did finally approve commercial fishing boats that can apply. There's a separate way they can do it on a loan now, so. I'm, I'm thinking that probably some of these boats are gonna take advantage of that directly, which would eliminate them from being able to take advantage of ours.
Right.
In theory.
Right now, we don't have a restriction on people taking other money and taking the city program money. The only restriction right now exists at the state level program. You're being ineligible if you have accepted over five thousand dollars of other CARES Act money. There's no such restriction on the city's program. So it's very possible that somebody could apply for the state economic assistance program or the state fisheries program for the federal program and still be eligible to apply for city money.
Is it true that we, we can make our own criteria for this to some degree? I mean, adding that line, it's like this says, if you've already, you know, qualified, received funds from another related source based on COVID, then you're not eligible.
Well, the problem with that is the businesses, there's businesses that receive money for payroll, to make payrolls, they didn't delay off their employees, that still doesn't make up for the lost revenue.
Right.
So this, this program, this program is kind of.
Different.
Different.
Not the original goal.
Yeah.
But to be different.
To be different in the payroll category.
And not, not be a disqualifier from any other.
So that'd be a totally separate thing for the boats and fishermen though. I guess we should, should see what kind of qualifications they have for that, right? Because they wouldn't be getting the payroll funds.
Every time we have this for the second round? But we didn't include it on the first round? That's, I don't know. I mean, the, some of the first businesses received help from other things and now, and now we're saying that they can't receive it would be. I mean, we're just trying to make it the same for, as the first round, just lowering it so that the people that didn't qualify can qualify. So I think putting that if you receive money from another source or whatever is kind of defeating the purpose.
I agree.
And the qualifiers are, they can't be received from this specific.
Yeah, right. The only, the only thing to disqualify them is receiving it from our city first round.
Yeah, I like your perspective on the fishermen, did you agree with that?
I agree.
Definitely not at all. I see your point too, where you're trying to support these people right here in our community that live here. The problem with I have is ninety nine percent of the money from those people goes back south. They actually fly up here and fish for two days and then fly back home. They take every penny they make back with them, other than a little bit they spend on fuel. I mean, half of them bring their own groceries with them when they come, most of them. And some of them, we had boats, a boat that's gonna qualify was here for a year and didn't even fish. And they ended up forcing them out of the harbor, but he has a permit, and I can guarantee you the guy will, he will apply. He didn't fish at all, they removed the boat from the harbor, and they finally got it out of the harbor. But it had a dive ladder on it, so it's, those are the kind of problems I have with the people is take advantage of programs like this.
Hey, whenever you have a program, somebody's gonna take advantage.
You're told to, or something. You just hope you're helping more people.
There, yeah, there's always gonna be that, and I express my opinion on that. This one is, all of these programs, in my opinion, are, are supposed to be for people who need it. And unfortunately, I feel like it, it is just one giant money grab fight out there right now. And that, that really bothers me. And there are some that don't need it and they're not applying. They're gonna make it, sure, it's hard, but I don't know. I've seen some people apply, but I don't know if they ever need it. So I, I'm inclined to put the, the qualifier at ten thousand? Yeah, I still feel we should try and run some general funds. So, if we put the qualifier at ten thousand, then are we gonna reduce the amount they're eligible for getting proportionally too? Because I mean, if they normally make ten thousand dollars, they certainly don't need to get ten thousand dollars from the program.
That would happen, so if they make less than ten thousand, they're not gonna be in that high tier.
There's, there's a schedule here, so.
And, and in, in the tier, the tiers have to change, so I'd say for now, it's at fifty thousand. The tier.
The biggest.
So I'm talking about the income, the income tiers.
But, okay, so the, uh, the way that the tiers are written into this round of the program in the draft documents that you have is any sole proprietor who has to use this alternative method of qualifying only qualifies for the three thousand dollar amount regardless of what their gross receipts are. And that's to keep it, because we're not comparing apples to apples between businesses. We're, we're letting this, these sole proprietors use a gross revenue number and everyone else we've made use a, a number after deductions. So in order, we're, we're kind of letting these sole proprietors get over the bar of eligibility. But right now, the way that it's written, they would only be eligible for the three thousand dollar grants. In order to be eligible for five or ten thousand dollars, they would still have to show a total business income of at least a hundred thousand dollars. And that would either be a business income as an incorporated business, which the ten thousand dollar bottom limit would no longer apply, or as a business, as sole proprietorship, where that income was at least seventy five percent of their total household income. So they would still have to meet the other requirements in order to get more than three thousand dollars from the program. But this would put them, this would get those businesses over the bar for eligibility to that amount of money.
So does that really solve the, um, the Amy's cabin situation? Because she would, that, that type of business, they would only qualify in three thousand, right?
Yes.
But the problem was people that invested back into their business. Oh, this stuff gets so complicated.
That's what I was just gonna ask, is can we change those tiers a little bit to where we go from, um, I mean, I guess my question is.
Punished for putting money into a really nice place, and that's not really fair, but it is a nice.
My question, well, yeah, you invest and you, you, you plan on recouping your investment, you know, and it didn't happen. So I guess my, um, my question is, what do you see being an issue with changing that business total income, uh, the, the schedule going from zero of fifty and fifty to two hundred and two hundred to a million? So that that schedule does allow for some smaller businesses that are likely, you know, the smaller you are, the greater the monetary impact, in my opinion. And if you're making a million dollars and you lose ten percent of your income versus you're making a hundred thousand, I mean, it, there's just, it's a greater impact to the smaller businesses.
You can absorb more of your.
Exactly. So, I mean, the, the only ramification I see to changing that schedule to something like I mentioned, zero of fifty, fifty to two hundred and two hundred to a million, is the fact that people might qualify for a greater amount of money, which when it gets down to, if we're still trying to keep it at the general fund, I don't know if it, if they.
Won't that upset the round one people? Cause there's somebody now that round one, and if they'd applied around two, they would have gotten more.
You know, round one, round two, I mean, I.
I'm just trying to keep it fair, it's a.
I mean, that's what I was asking.
Yeah. But yeah, we would need to change the zero to a hundred.
I mean, it's constantly evolving. We'd make a choice to apply for it as it comes. You know, the next round's different. I did the same thing with PPP, applied for it. Didn't work for me. Had I kept it, waited for the regulations to change, well, we would have. But.
Yeah.
And the council can certainly set what criteria it wants. So if you prefer that, that we generally, for all applicants, use a gross revenue number as opposed to the total income number that we used in the first round, that would.
Change things too.
Right. It would be, it would be very different than the first round. There would be some possibility that would make some people ineligible now because they're over the million dollar cap. But the folks that are eligible would likely be eligible for more money.
That's a tough one, cause a gross of a million dollars doesn't mean you're necessarily left over with much to be earned.
Especially.
Depends on your business.
Especially if you look like retail businesses.
Yeah.
The total income line, one of the primary deductions that you take before you get to total income is the cost of goods sold. And so for retail businesses, you take that off the top. The gross income line is above that deduction. So counting gross income, all of that, the cost of that inventory counts as part of your, you don't get to take that deduction. as part of your, you don't get to take that deduction. And again, if you go over a million dollars, then the way that it's structured currently, which the council can certainly change if it wants to, the way that it's structured currently is that those businesses would not be eligible.
What if we upped the cap on that, but, um, we also just, I mean, they can't receive more than ten thousand, right? I mean, and if you think that people are going to land in that higher tax bracket, we, or wherever, we can always just drop the amount down and say that they can maybe get seventy-five or eight thousand or something, so that we're not paying a ton of ten thousands everywhere. It might help solve the problem, I don't know.
The council can certainly change the upper level or remove the upper level. Those, again, these, those numbers aren't magic, they're not dictated anywhere. And the council can certainly change the amount at each, at each level.
Because I mean, some people might be upset that they don't get the ten thousand, but also it helps the people that would not qualify for it.
Just removing that seventy-five percent of the overall income, that changed a lot of it, didn't it?
Um, and I didn't remove the seventy-five percent requirement, I just gave an alternative for sole proprietorships. So a sole proprietorship who makes, and, and my thinking was a sole proprietorship that makes over a hundred thousand dollars of business income in a year, and that's clearly seventy-five percent of their income, then that would allow them to qualify for the five thousand dollar amount. Or if they make over two hundred and fifty thousand for the ten thousand dollar amount. Because we were still looking at total income, the same as what we were looking at with all the other businesses. Only the sole proprietors that, that their business income does not equal seventy-five percent of their adjusted gross income would use this alternate calculation. And then they would, right now, the way that it was, it's written, they would then be eligible for three thousand dollars. So it's, it's, um, it's taking that group of businesses and comparing apples to oranges in order to give them another method that they can qualify, but.
So could we have two tiers for the sole proprietor?
Well, we have one tier for sole proprietors that qualify by virtue of their gross sales. And we have, all of the business tiers are available to a sole proprietorship that qualifies under the, the rules of the first round.
That's what I'm saying, for that second, that alternate method that you're creating.
There's no, no multiple tiers, so.
I mean, could we just add its tier two to that one?
Sure.
Now, I would, my, you know, my intent, we had the second round, to pretty much keep it the same, like Shonda was saying, or Shonda, sorry, yeah. Was saying, um, have it pretty much the same, the people that missed applying, the people that we didn't, you know, they already made criteria. If you're unattentive, they'll leave somebody out. Fix that gap. I don't, we start changing a lot of it, it kind of is unfair to the round one people. So I mean, I feel like if we do the round two and just give two tiers to the, you know, sole proprietor that's not the seventy-five percent, then that would resolve it. Unless I'm not thinking of something.
Tell me what you're thinking on the two tiers.
We'll just have a tier one for the three thousand and a tier two for the seven thousand five hundred.
And those tiers qualifications would be, so you would have the sole proprietor tier that the business income is not at least seventy-five percent? Or, and then you would have
Could have qualified.
Another tier that qualifies with their.
Well, we're talking about, and correct me if I'm wrong here, the city of Craig's sales tax returns at total at least fifty-four thousand. Talking about adjusting that number, is that correct?
Right, to.
To whatever.
Right, yeah, right.
So if we change that number from fifty-four to ten thousand, and make that, you know, ten to fifty, let's say, and make that the three thousand. And then you have fifty to a hundred and make that tier, um, seven thousand five hundred.
Right.
So on the second option. Yeah.
Just two-tier that one.
So that dollar amount, though, would create a situation where a regular incorporated business that made that much would still only be eligible for five thousand.
Nobody got above the five thousand. It says up to.
Oh, I'm sorry, it does say seventy-five hundred. That, that should read five thousand. I'm sorry, I see where you're getting that from, like.
Oh.
Missed that.
Okay.
I know the first round, it was five thousand dollars.
Okay, so up to seven thousand five hundred, that's just typo, you can say five thousand.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, so that's what I'm talking about.
I'm just sorry you're reading that.
Yeah, so tier one for that would be the three thousand, and then tier two would be the five thousand.
So qualifying city sales tax return to between ten and fifty thousand.
Would be.
Qualify for two thousand. And between fifty and a hundred thousand, or greater than fifty.
Greater than fifty would be seven thousand five hundred.
So a, a regular business, a regular incorporated business that makes fifty thousand would be, would only be eligible for three thousand dollars in grant. But a sole proprietorship that grows more than fifty thousand, you would want to be eligible for five thousand?
Can't you just discuss one individually for us, Brian, and just try and guess, you know?
Sorry.
I mean, we could do ten to thirty is three thousand, and then greater than thirty, I don't know.
Why not just ten to a hundred thousand?
Ten to a hundred, yeah.
Oh, ten to a hundred, I see.
Three thousand.
The way you solved it would be ten to a hundred.
You're right.
A hundred.
Okay, then that's what I, that's what I was.
That does create an advantage for these sole proprietors, because.
And I'm not trying to give anybody an advantage, I'm trying to make it level.
And the sole proprietors would now have an advantage because we're using a gross sales number, not an adjusted number like we are doing for the other businesses.
Okay, so then help me out here, what if we did ten to a hundred, three thousand, and then greater than a hundred, five thousand? Would that be fair?
Still gives the sole proprietor the advantage because they're using a different number. It's apples or oranges that much, it's a pain.
Just down the corner. It's almost like you'd have to do two separate grants. One for sole proprietors and one for.
Well, whether you did it in one grant or two grants, you would, you would still have the same issue of
You would.
How you're treating, how you're treating them equitably. I would, I would maybe recommend, if you're looking for some additional amount for sole proprietors who use the alternate method.
Yes.
Pick some amount over three thousand, under five thousand. That gives them an opportunity for more grant funds, but still, um, the businesses who have to use an amount that has some deductions to it can still qualify for more money.
That's what I wanna do.
So that leaves four thousand, under, over three and under five.
What?
Are we gonna make these maybe certain years?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're all in agreement to lower it to ten thousand instead of fifty-four, okay, so.
Yeah.
So we're all in agreement on ten, okay, so we've got, we've got ten, and then what do we wanna make the upper limit for the three thousand?
I just want him to be able to qualify more people.
But without being unfair to the other categories. So what would be the upper number for the?
Because I just don't want people to be punished for putting money back into the.
No, I agree one hundred percent, but I think, I think that ten thousand does that. Or, and catches those small businesses that even though it's small, it's still substantial to them.
Right.
So we go with ten thousand as the minimum, up to what for the three thousand dollar allotment? Because this is now gross, right?
Right.
Yes, gross income.
We suggest just a hundred thousand dollars, which is the next tier.
Well, I mean, if we do hundred, though, they're not using gross, and then that gives an advantage to this seventy-five percent.
But you're not giving them as much money as you're giving the business who makes over a hundred thousand either, uh, the incorporated business that makes over a hundred thousand.
Okay.
That's where the difference between four thousand and five thousand dollars is.
Okay, so it'd be ten K to what for three thousand?
If you kept it consistent with the other tiers, it would be ten thousand to a hundred thousand and gross revenues
Right.
Would be three, three thousand dollar grant.
And then greater than a hundred thousand.
A hundred thousand would be a four thousand dollar tier.
You mean five thousand dollar grant?
Um, well, you wanted four thousand to keep them, that was between the three and five thousand, but you can set the numbers wherever you want to.
I like that. Ten thousand to a hundred thousand grants them up to four, four thousand. And that leaves the businesses using the other option with their total income of, you know, over a hundred thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand advantage. Um, getting five thousand because they're using a different number. So it's, apples and oranges are still being used, but yet no one has some massive advantage.
So a sole, a sole proprietorship who does not otherwise qualify, whose gross, gross sales and rentals is between zero and a hundred thousand dollars would get three thousand dollars in grants. A sole proprietorship who does not otherwise qualify, whose gross sales and rentals is over a hundred thousand dollars would get a four thousand dollar grant.
Okay.
Is that, whatever?
We think so.
Karen?
Yes. Then that leaves the only issue to resolve the cap that we wanna put on it, if, if you wanted to move the mortgage, but I don't know.
The, the cap was, again, for those that were using the alternative, right?
No, the cap is what money we wanna spend. I say that we, we have fifty-five left, we cap it at fifty-five. When we get all the applications, if they're sixty, we can at that point then increase it. So for the sake of just putting a cap on it.
There already is a cap, because the council's already appropriated the, identified two hundred thousand, so.
Well, it's in an ocean, we need to have a, an amount that we allocate.
Well, i- if you don't wanna allocate any more money, you don't need another motion. I can certainly use the money that's probably been appropriated.
Okay, so if we go that route and we get all these applications in and we need sixty or sixty-two, can we at that point allocate more?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't see why not.
So why don't we just do that, leave it at what we've already allocated, and then when we get all these applications, then figure out.
That was my suggestion. We're in agreement to keep it out of the general fund.
Yes.
To avoid potentials of.
And then we have the application.
But are we gonna let them know?
Well, the way that we did in the first round, which I'll do again, is I, I told people what the, the eligibility amount is an up to amount. And, and they, the grant application and guidance clearly says that if there's more applications, then there are money, and everyone's will be reduced.
Proportionally.
And then, but, they are, the, the part I'm worried about is that they take the money, we're giving them CARES money, and then they don't qualify for anything else.
But we can, we're not, we're using general fund money. But if we decide.
I thought you capped out the general fund, we are gonna start using the CARES money at that point.
We still said fifty-five of general fund.
Right.
So when we get the applications back, then we can sort out.
See, that's the problem, is at that point, if we say, okay, we're gonna use CARES money, then all these applicants don't know we were gonna use CARES money.
And what they can choose to not accept it at that point, but I don't think the general consensus of the council is to use CARES money.
And the way I saw it happening is just like we discussed a few minutes ago, where if we have fifty-five thousand, we have, you know, seventy thousand dollars of approvals, then we may reduce the amount given, or we can choose to appropriate the general fund another fifteen thousand.
Right.
We have two options, two avenues to pursue that one.
Okay.
Then, at that point, if we wanna do another grant, it will be funded from CARES money.
Right. Yeah. And at that point, while you know the number that we're talking about, I think it'll be easier than trying to theorize. So now how do we put this into our motion?
Remove all that stuff you just took notes on?
Second, okay, so, motion. I'm, I'm now lost. Level squares are gone, is it, that's a square?
I, I, that's my fault.
Lower right hand corner, top sheet.
All right.
Okay. So I move to approve the Craig economic assistance for nonprofit now.
Would you like me to sum up the changes that I think the council has made?
I move to approve, summarize the changes.
Will that help the motion?
Yes.
So a- as I understand it, um, the council would like to add a second tier for sole proprietors who don't otherwise qualify under seventy-five percent rule. Uh, so those sole proprietorships would receive up to three thousand dollars uh, if their gross sales and rentals is under a hundred thousand dollars and four thousand dollars if those gross sales and rentals are over a hundred thousand dollars. The eligibility level, uh, for those sole proprietorships will be at least ten thousand dollars worth of gross sales and rentals uh, as calculated from their sales tax returns. And the money, uh, you know, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Those are the only changes that I can note. Did I miss something?
That's all.
So was your motion?
That was all.
A motion to adopt the program as amended for people.
Move to approve the motion as amended.
Sorry.
Motion to second to do an end program as you suggested. All on paper?
All right.
All right.
All right.
Approve.
Thank you, thank you, council, I do, I, I really, I would just wanna say I appreciate the council's discussion and involvement. I, I don't get to is the right word, but think about this stuff. Um, a lot of hours of every day and sit here and work on the details. And so thank you for being patient and jumping into discussion.
And I think the city of Craig should be commended and proned, um, for, uh, being the first city, at least on Prince Wales, to make this money for our businesses.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I agree.
It's a lot.
Yeah, I, I think it's neat, the, the general fund component to it, um. I think, you know, one of the things that I've, I've heard many times, uh, in the community, and I've seen it on Facebook comments and a number of things, as this money comes in, it seems to be a fear that the, the city administration is supposed to grab it and hold on to it. I've, I've never gotten an impression from anybody here, and I've always felt that our goal is to, to get this out to the community members to, to share in the, the assistance that we're getting and that the community needs. Um, I, I just think that, um, that, you know, the people out there watching on Facebook should know that there's not a, one of us in this administration or, or on this council that, that feels that way. I think everybody should be comfortable.
I also promise that if we come back for a recommendation for four rounds of funding, it will be much simpler. Um, it would be our intent to come back to the council if we wanna continue to give money to, to the local businesses after this round to simply use a calculated difference in sales tax returns between a quarter twenty, the same quarter in twenty nineteen as twenty twenty, and give the council some option to make up some percentage of the difference for those businesses that made less money this year than they did last year. But it would be a lot easier anyway, so if you're doing another round, I'd like to run the program like that to the council.
Yeah, that's great. I think all those watching, you know, um, that are here at this meeting virtually should, should realize that um, very much like every business out there on the planet right now, um, and I myself am in the same boat. Um, we are, we are learning as we go. And I mean, it's hard about planning at the end and figuring out how to do this and that. Um, Brian, you've done a good job right here, just making it up as you go, and everybody's learning. And, um, you know, the, the public perception and, um, uh, should, they should, just take that into account and, and, and be patient as we all learn. Um, I'm speaking to everybody that's out there on Facebook, let's go.
YouTube today.
YouTube, all right, changing it up a bit. Um, but it is, it's, it's just a, it's such a learn-as-you-go situation, and adjust, and, um, I've, I've been experiencing it myself hugely, um, because I know you guys have, for months, it's so incredible, um, anyway.
Mr. Mayor, um, next on the agenda is an appeal from one of the ineligible sole proprietorships from the last round. Uh, this issue is likely resolved with the changes made in the second round. So just like the two appeals that were tabled at the last meeting, our recommendation is that the council just table this appeal until the second round of grants can take its, run its course, and probably will resolve the appeal.
Move to table non-appeal, uh, to your background assistance, correct the last council's consent.
Second.
Motion to second it to stable non-appeal, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Individual family care tax assistance.
Mayor, council, so this is the other side of the coin. The council, a couple of meetings ago, um, uh, decided to kind of steer clear of individual assistance directly, and asked, asked staff to come up with some proposal to, uh, do some individual assistance in the community through the nonprofits. So this program, uh, would be to put a grant program, uh, grant applications out for nonprofits to provide direct services to red, to community members, and to give them money in order to increase those direct services. Primarily, we would be looking at existing five O N C threes, and either existing services or newly proposed services from those nonprofits. Um, there's no set dollar amounts in there, it very much will be a negotiation with nonprofits, um, in terms of the services they intend to provide, and their estimate of how many people and the cost of those services. So the idea will be to try to provide some financial assistance that gets directly to community members. This grant is not intended for nonprofits' operations. Uh, the grant documents specify that they can only spend ten percent of the grant on administration of the programs, and at least ninety percent of the funds that we grant them have to be passed through, uh, to individuals and families, whether that's through, uh, in-kind services like maintaining food bank, or direct services like rental or utility assistance, or subsidized services like subsidized childcare. There will be a requirement that each person receiving a certified certificate impacted by COVID nineteen. The nonprofits will have to collect those and send those in in order for us to use the CARES money, um, in order to, to fund the program. My intent will be to put this out, as council approves it tonight, for two weeks, for nonprofits to respond, negotiate dollar amounts with those nonprofits, and then bring the list back to the council for approval.
The ten percent, do you, how many? Any idea of how, how you calculate the ten percent? Was it just a, a, a random number? Or do you have an idea of what administering, you know, time-wise administering programs like this costs?
I know.
I, just feeling like that's, um, maybe a little low. Um, you look at some of the nonprofits throughout the nation that, that do this kind of stuff, and I feel like it, it's generally a little higher, and I know we, we want the majority of the funds to go, um, you know, through, but at the same time, we don't want it to be a massive burden to the nonprofits, and.
See, I, and I know that there is administrative costs associated with it, but I, I kind of agree with keeping it low, because we want the money to go directly to the people. They already have the systems and everything in place, we're basically giving them money to pass through. They already, they don't need to hire a secretary for the money we're giving them.
If anything, you're just keeping the secretary busy, right?
Yeah, I mean, like we fill in the power food bank. You know, we're giving them a little bit to help subsidize the administrative, but they really should have the administrative costs already covered. And I could be wrong, I could have run a nonprofit like Power or anything, but, and I don't doubt their regular administrative cost is higher, I'm not questioning that. But for the purposes of this money, this is basically just giving them money to give to people.
And it was, yeah, it was a question, um, more than anything, I just, uh, I just didn't know.
Nothing magic about that ten percent number.
Yeah.
If, if nonprofit, if we approve this, nonprofits come back to us, and that is a sticking point and a problem for them, could we amend it at a later date? Or we have to do that, too, on nonprofits?
I don't see why not.
I don't think we're gonna hear any, I think, like you said, nobody hearing the costs is, for the nonprofits that we're gonna see eligible for this, are gonna be fine with the, the ten percent, because most of them are gonna, oh, most of them, yeah, almost no cost.
Yeah.
It's like, one of the things I do when I donate to charities, that's the first line I might look at. If they're not twelve percent or less administrative cost, they get zero dollars from Jim. There are a lot of them, you look at, and it's horrifying. It's, it's like, it's a joke, they're not really passing any money to get them through. And that's exactly what it's getting at, most, most are higher than ten percent, but like you said, in this case, they, they're, they're likely are higher typically, but in this case.
Their daily cost, this is an extra shot from the arm, there's no one to mind to help you out, to help others.
And the nonprofits, as a reminder, the nonprofits are eligible under the first round, and then to the second round of economic assistance money. That money is not tied to client assistance, that money, the nonprofits are allowed to use for
Administrative.
general operational costs.
Yeah, you're right, I forgot about that point. So we are giving them money to help with their, with their operation. If they want.
Right, ten percent, it's perfect.
Got that clarified?
I do.
Good job.
We need to approve it, so.
We need to determine about, we want to provide.
He was negotiating it.
And, yeah. Uh, if, if you want to fund it, if you want to put a dollar amount on there, uh, but we can certainly also negotiate that out with the nonprofits and bring the list back to the council.
Yeah, I'm more, I'm more comfortable than you are.
Yeah, I'd like to see what they come back with, because we could allocate two hundred, and then they can come back and offer twenty, or vice versa. Yeah. So.
Move to approve.
I really, I did not want my card to be squared, stop.
Where is it?
Did he say anything? I, no, he didn't.
No.
Oh.
You moved to approve.
I lost my spot, it's my.
Yeah.
Uh, move to approve the Craig Economic Assistance for Nonprofits, for families and individuals grant program, including grant guidance documents, grant application as amended.
Second.
Well, it's been seconded to approve all that stuff. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We move on to the individual family care back, we already take care of that one. Just an update to stable asset certification, Craig EMS.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have really, uh, anything new to offer, other than, other than what was in the staff report, which, uh, was on the second page of my staff report, where I touched on some of the action staff has taken, uh, we'll say the mayor, John Muths, and I formed a interview committee to interview three applicants for the vacant EMS coordinator to position, and getting close, I think, to, uh, making some decisions based on the vacancies we have available and the applicants we have in place. Um, still looking at getting a visit from a, from a potential sponsoring physician, uh, this month, uh, which is potentially very positive. And, uh, once we get past these two decision-making points, then, uh, we'll have, uh, some additional information for the council as well as, maybe a clear path forward to getting back to a position where we can run. Certainly, we establish a physician-assisted, physician-sponsored BLS, we hopefully move toward ALS, and then giving back the billing as well.
Change order for the P and D Harbor instruction.
Mr. Mayor, there's a memorandum in the packet explaining the proposed change order. Be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Determining the last eight days whether or not we'd be able to charge, uh, some of us against CARES Act funding, sign your seat.
Um, I think we still can, but, uh, honestly, I like to consult, bounce this idea, and mostly I do that off of Brian, since we both read the, the, uh, guidance, just to get his opinion as well. So I'm not positive, but, uh, the vendor has clearly indicated that the virus is the cause of the delay. Give you response to it, so I think it is, but, like I said, I, um, confirmed that with my, my coworker.
We're going to send this project, we, we determine these to be done, and we want to go ahead with it.
It does, and it's more money, but it also gets us more of the step, uh, the contractor's time in town, and he spends more money on the local vendors, spending nine catch candy, spending nine here. It's just a lot to like about it, even though it's more money. I think you get more value certainly than we would have otherwise.
I'll move to approve change order number one, Craig Harbor Condition Survey Project Contract, Community Engineers Authorizing Project Cost, not six, eight, four thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars.
Second.
Motion to second it to change order on the P and D Harbor Condition Survey contract.
Shouldn't know you second, okay. Sorry, I'm not used to doing this.
Do we need to discuss this further? Okay, we can vote then. All in favor of the change order for the Harbor Condition Survey, signify with a aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
Moving on to new business, the head man.
No second.
We're ready to go to executive session then, to discuss the Craig EMS Coordinator position.
Mr. Mayor, there is a memorandum in the packet about this, um, um, statute, uh, lists out the, uh, options for moving into executive session. The one that, uh, tends, it does apply here, is item number two from the memo. So Chandel is here, being the most recent, um, individual to hold the position, the EMS coordinator position, um, and, uh, that will be the topic of the discussion. She's entitled to request a session be in, in public rather than, uh, in private, so this would be an appropriate time to ask her if she has a preference for, for the two.
Do you have a preference?
No.
Then I recommend moving into executive session.
We will move into executive session now.
Requires adoption of the motion.
I move to, to be in the executive session of the Craig City Council to address the Craig EMS Coordinator position as subject of a maintained pressure distribution character of person. Second.
Motion to second it to move into executive session, to discuss the EMS Coordinator position. All in favor, so you can talk about it.
Aye.
Opposed?
Council, can you give me two or three minutes to start the video and audio, and shut everything down, so you guys can go into executive session?
We'll take it.